Cell phones are turning to vibrate. Next item is the minutes.
You want the minutes with the one correction on item three.
Okay, what was the correction?
Mr. Tripp, it was the same from a motion I wrote in the paper and I didn't have it on there.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Butler.
What we have on the agenda here is we've been working with federal government, her name's Kelly, and what they do, they come and audit our procedures or they ask about our procedures and our financial policies and our fixed assets. So we've done, she sent us kind of examples to file so we get to two or higher levels. And where we've got the differences, where it's highlighted in bold here, where the budget and financial management procedures, on a financial side, year-end reports slash audit. Then on the fixed assets, when you get to that, those are also highlighted, the changes in the fixed asset policy.
Uh, I've got a question on the capital improvements budget policy.
Okay.
Number four.
Okay.
Is there a reason that's in there?
Uh, that was already passed by you. And we do put over 600,000 year into the CAPCIP, actually we put in more. One year is 1.2 million, one year is 600,000, next, this year is 845,000.
Right, but according to this, we're mandated to do that, minimum of 600,000 annually.
Yes, and that was in there when it was originally passed. That's not a change, that was in there before.
No, I understand that.
Yep.
But what I'm talking about is taking it out. Now, there might not be support.
Probably taking it out.
There might not be support to take it out, I don't know.
But you have, you know, you have been doing it for years, well, really about seven, eight years since we started.
Yes, we have.
Loans.
Right.
It's up to the board whether they want it or not.
Any thoughts?
I don't know, is there a problem with it being in there?
But it just seems like we're mandated to do that. If we choose one year not to...
Um, did you guys make a motion a long time ago that that would be the amount?
Yes, we did, we had the same discussion. When you brought it forward, did you?
When was that?
Oh, probably a couple of years ago.
That was when?
By August.
Was it, did you look at?
I did not.
It wasn't too long ago, it was when Dennis came over here and we got the policies.
Right.
You mean I had the same objection?
Yes.
Well, I'm consistent.
You're consistent.
Do we, I mean, do we need to have that in there as a minimum amount that should be, uh, that can be borrowed or?
This was suggested amount. The file, you know, I've looked through other county policies, through other counties, they do have a minimum amount in there.
Mm-hmm.
And like I say, for the last probably seven, eight years, we have borrowed more than that.
Yes, we have.
But this just sets up, you can take it out, it doesn't matter to me.
Yes, adding in there originally was because it just, that's how he prepares the budget. It doesn't mean you have to look after it, but that's how he prepares it. That's what that, this guy.
Right.
As long as it doesn't say shall or must.
Okay, since I've made this objection before, let's just...
Like Pat says, you're consistent.
Why are the procedures in red under physical inventory?
Those were the changes that were suggested.
This is new stuff?
We were actually doing it, it just wasn't incorporated into the asset policy. It was actually incorporated in the AP policy. That way you do it.
And you get all from the federal government?
Suggested.
Suggested those procedures should go somewhere.
I'd move on the adoption of these policies.
Second.
Well, your motion's on the financial policies.
Financial policies.
Yeah, there are two separate motions here.
Right.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fixed asset policy. That was your question mark on the red?
Why were they in red? Then Jenny explain that. They're additions to, that we already have in place, but they had us put them in the fixed asset policy.
I'd make a motion to accept the fixed asset inventory policy.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dane. Have a noticeable property sale.
This is a direct sale, we don't have to run through the bid process.
I would rather run it through the bid process, but it's up to the board.
So if we direct, did we still have to have a hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Which pleasure?
Move the director to sit down.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So the hearing will be on the 13th day of August, 2013, 10:15?
Yep.
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two Bronson City Council appointments, why don't we take them separately?
Move to accept Tony Thompson.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to accept Pat Wordy Kemper.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the Sheriff's Civil Division fourth quarterly report. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Peggy?
I'm not sure. But I've been planning for the past week. On July 1st, 2013, the Woodbury County Office of Planning and Zoning received a petition for subdividing a parcel. The applicant is Joyce A. Wingert, who wishes to divide an existing 42.5 acre parcel in order the existing homestead site can exist on an independent 2.01 net acre parcel. The property is located in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 20, Lloyd Township, approximately .8 mile northwest of Bronson on the north side of County Road right of way. The homestead site, she will continue to be serviced by an existing driveway addressed 1907 County Home Road. At your meeting of July 16th, you forwarded the platting to the zoning commission for recommendation. On July 22nd, a public hearing was held and the commission voted to recommend approval of the final platting, subject to the following conditions. The recording of a paving agreement applying to the parent parcel meeting county paving policies. The addition of a plat certification regarding Bronson's town council's waiver of the extraterritorial review. Staff recommendation, the planning and zoning department concurs with the commission recommendations. That's it.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to move on the final platting of the Wingert second addition.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you want these, Peggy?
Do you want these?
Do you want these?
Oh.
Mr. Nara.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Any more bridges fall in? No, so far so good. Well, this one was one we knew had its, was nearing the end of its life and kind of had the one foot in the grave and the other on a banana peel. And I had with the landowners out there yesterday, so we're still working on the right-of-way issues. First one is consider acceptance of final work and direct chair to sign final payment voucher for FM CO-97, pair 95. This was one of our asphalt resurfacing jobs last year. The work was completed and ready for final acceptance.
I'd move the chair to be authorized to sign.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this, where is this?
Uh, that one would be the, um, project on L-21 between D-38 and D-54.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's D-51, I guess that's, I got the two of them mixed up. D-51 is the one where we did the in-place recycling and then three-inch overlay on the project.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Put it up twice.
I apologize, I had to, if I just looked up at the agenda, it would have helped. Now, the second one is the L-21 job.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the final job is FM CO-97, pair 115. This is the job from Smithland South to the county line.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, next I have underground utility permit for the board's consideration. This is to move a telephone line, this is in conjunction with our pavement replacement project on 260th Street. So they'll be picking it up at Port Neal Road and carrying the new line out near the fence so that it's out of the way of our construction project, um, out toward the Design Homes building.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Did we miss getting the, the agenda item on that I sent late? Those last permits, are they at the bottom? Okay, we're, we're good. Um, next we have the improvements to the existing public road grade at 260th Street. Uh, this is the agreement for the installation of railroad crossing active warning. Uh, we'll be having flashers and gates. This is our first RISE-funded project out there on the CF Industries area. Um, the Union Pacific Railroad will be doing the work. Their estimated cost is $209,445 for the work. Uh, the preliminary engineering is completed, we'll have a bill coming on that. And, uh, this is the actual one to build the crossing. Uh, their proposal is to have it in toward late September.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This only requires the signature of the chair of the board, they don't require it to be attested. Okay, bids for vehicles. Right here. I have some bid tabs. Keep track in the gallery. The first quotation is from Billion. There is an extra column if we run a room again with, with the number that might be coming in. Uh, Billion Auto's first quotation is for a 2014 Chevy Traverse. Uh, purchase price, $27,500. Trade on unit 100, which is a 2005 Trailblazer, is $4,000. Net price, $23,500. They also submitted a 2014 Jeep Grand Cherokee. Purchase price, $29,800. Uh, same trade-in value of 4,000, for a net purchase price of $25,800. That concludes Billion's bids. Next we have Berry Motors of Danbury.
I guess it's a Ford.
Yes, in all likelihood it is. Uh, we have a 2014 Ford Explorer XLT. Uh, their bid is $30,920. Trade in on unit 100, $4,500. Net purchase price, $26,420. And finally, we have a quote from Kneffler Chevrolet of Sioux City. Their net purchase price on a 2014 Chevrolet Traverse is $29,500, less $4,000 trade. Net purchase price, $25,900.
Wait a minute, you said 29.5?
You did say 29.5.
Yes, I said 29.5. And they made a math error, apparently they're showing 25.9 as the net purchase price. All I did was read what they had. I believe that should be 25.5.
It's on a 2000 Traverse, two, 14?
2014 Chevy Traverse.
Move to send us back to the engineer for recommendation?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mark?
Yes, we have a couple of utility permits. You know, Long Lines is selling off their cellular phone system, and it's being purchased by AT&amp;T Mobility. Uh, they have three permits to work on new lines going out to tower sites. Uh, the first one of those is near the city of Lawton, they'll be doing work along Correctionville Road, installing fiber optic cable. Basically, they're coming from the boxes that are already installed within the right-of-way. Uh, they're making improvements to the boxes and then carrying new lines back to each tower site. I recommend approval of the first permit along Correctionville Road near the town of Lawton.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next we have another tower site. Uh, this one's in Liberty Township. The location of this one would be along Old Highway 75, I'm sorry, um, this is the one immediately north of D-51, so we, if you recall, we did have fiber optic headed out there that was being moved as part of our earlier permit. This is the matching permit for AT&amp;T Mobility to connect into that fiber optic.
Move it. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, uh, finally, we have a new, uh, new line going to a tower site near the town of Anthem. With a street crossing. Look at these last, they're before I send them in, but it's not right on the tip of my tongue. This is along County Road, D-38, 220th Street, just east of Knox Avenue.
Move it. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, that concludes our business for this week.
Thanks, Mark.
Uh, all that cable that's going in on Correctionville Road, Buchanan, upstone, what, is that for Camp High Hopes or?
That wasn't for Camp High Hopes, that was, uh, that was just updated and upgraded fiber optic capacity. Board signed the permit for that project back in April. Um, and it is a pretty extensive project, it's bringing it all the way up from Highway 20 corridor and then running along Correctionville Road and 150th Street.
No.
Connecting toward the town of Lawton eventually, and I think it also goes over toward Mobile. So it's a pretty extensive project that, uh, that they're working on in that area.
Who's doing that?
This is expanded capacity. I can't remember for sure, but I can look it up for you, Mark.
Is it AT&amp;T?
I don't recall that one being AT&amp;T. I want to say that one was, was Northwest Iowa Telephone. I think that's who that was, but I can double check that.
That's okay.
We've been monitoring their work out there and, uh, we're also, they've also been working on the, um, locate of that distribution line in that area along Charles Avenue, coming up to Highway 20, probably also seeing the work on the north side of 20 there, bringing down distribution line toward East Lind Avenue on the west side of Lawton as well, so. A lot of utility work going on in that area.
They're doing a nice job.
Yeah, yeah.
How's the, I know you gave us an update, I think a couple of weeks ago, the road into Luton?
Uh, they finally finished recycling the existing pavement last Saturday.
There's still a lot of pavement out there.
Uh, there, there's a lot of grade work to do. They were having trouble with their GPS unit, that, all of their machines are controlled utilizing GPS. They overcut some of the areas out there because the GPS unit was malfunctioning, so they're working on that base improvement. Um, it's the intention of Cedar Valley to do the paving work on the east side of the bridge down there.
Okay.
That will be getting done this week. Uh, they have to break down their paving machine to get it across the bridge, and then by then, hopefully, the subcontractor will have everything caught up west of the bridge, and we'll be able to continue through that smoothly. I was going to try and duck out there this morning just to monitor how they are doing, but, uh, I know we're still not paving out there yet.
Natives are restless.
I understand. Uh, I actually got a call from the Sarogordo County engineer who is waiting for our very same subcontractor up there on the project. Uh, they also have a road of about 1,800 vehicles a day that's tied up. Um, it seems like they had more work than anticipated, they split their crew. Uh, they have three men working up there, we have two men working down here most days, and you just don't make a lot of progress crushing four and a half miles of pavement with two guys working on that. It has been very slow-going. Um, we did have a meeting with them last week, and that's why they worked through the weekend. They also were working sunrise till sunset, trying to finish crushing that pavement out there, so. Um, we're hoping, we, we know once Cedar Valley moves in that the project will accelerate. They're looking at about three days of pavement out there. Um, we're disappointed at this point, whether they'll get to the end of their working days or not, we're not sure yet. They've had a couple of rainy days in there that have helped them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, we've got five minutes left for our public hearing. Gary? You shouldn't take very long.
Yes, sir. Um, today I have on the agenda the request to authorize, uh, my department to apply for the 2014 EMS Systems Development Grant. It's, uh, $7,713. This is a grant we've been receiving every year for several years. Uh, we use it to reimburse the rural squads for training costs, both initial and continuing education costs for EMS. So I need the board to authorize us to make the application, and then I also need to be authorized as the representative for the, uh, the authorized representative for the grant.
I'd move that you authorize the application anyway for the grant, start out with.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd move, uh, we designate Gary Brown as the authorized representative for the 14 EMS System Development Grant.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. It's not a lot of money, but every little bit helps. It's only seven hundred bucks, helps a lot for the squads to cover some of their training costs.
Does that come from the state, Gary, or?
Comes from the Department of Public Health, and it's the fees that we pay when we get recertified, they put it back into a, uh, training program grant. The money actually, we pay it, then it comes, kind of comes back. It's part of the funding come share, so. We'd like to see it about 10 times bigger so we can do some other work with it, but...
Pay more fees.
Yeah.
Better than nothing. Thanks, Gary. I think it's close enough to 10:30. That clock is about three or four minutes slow. Mr. Butler.
What we're doing today, it's having a public hearing on Budget Amendment Number One. Budget Amendment Number One basically consists of spreading the wages out that we could not spread at the point we actually did the budgets and did our certification budgets in March because the union contracts were just getting done and we did not have the figures to spread it out. Also, we did appropriate two cars, the sheriff's office, and that gives him four cars this year, he actually had two last year on just accounting deal here. So that's what we're doing this time, there'll probably be at least one more for sure, and maybe two more budget amendments, but this is the first one to get them coincided with the resolution we did pass in July 1st.
Is there a motion?
I'd move it.
Close the hearing?
Second.
Is there anyone else to be heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, do we need a motion to accept this, Patrick?
Yes.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Pat.
I did leave the record of hearing up for Pat for chair, and I'd have to sign.
Patricia.
Good morning. What you have before you today on the agenda is consideration of the Tribe View, uh, office relocation services. What I've tried to do in the memo is address some of the concerns, um, that have been brought, you know, as, as a part of this conversation. Um, the overall intent is here is to get all personnel under one roof, um, to communicate and, and just operate as effective as possible. So if you have any questions on this, or if there's anything you would like me to, um, Karen has put the, the location out there up on the, uh, screen so that you can see that a little bit bigger. I know there were some concerns, and first and foremost, no, there's never been any discussion or consideration of relocating Veterans Affairs. Um, the location out there, I know that there's been concern about parking. The area does require a minimum of 18 parking spaces the way it's zoned right now, and we do feel that there's adequate room out there, plus with some, um, consideration being given to traffic flow out there, we think that that will address the parking problems that Veterans Affairs is currently having without jeopardizing or harming the private business located there. There's a couple of different things we could do, um, and suggest to be done to address both those situations. Um, another concern of Veterans Affairs was that the computer system out there is awful slow because you'll have to forgive my vocab... because you'll have to forgive my vocabulary on this, but my understanding is right now you have to hop and use links to get back to the courthouse, which is incredibly slow. If you put 20 more users on there, we'd just bog that system down considerably. So what I've done is I've talked to Glenn Settavi about schedule and on getting fiber optic out there and being able to access back to the courthouse through our own fibers. If you, if you're familiar, I'm sure you're all familiar with the area down there. The Sioux City Water Treatment and Lift Station is just further east of that location there. They are not themselves on, they also have to suffer through the hops and that right now. So it would be a, kind of like a shared project to get that line there and then loop it back and it'll get some redundancy on the lines in case something gets cut north of there. The, you know, traffic could be rerouted through the lines that they would put down there. So the cost estimates that you have, one of those cost estimates was broken out on a cost share basis between who would split and share the costs. And the other one was not broken out in that manner, but I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Glenn Settavi and some of the other interested parties on whether or not and how that will also be broken out for the project. So that $14,000 estimate could be considerably reduced there to reflect that cost share that's on the prior pages. But please don't ask me any questions specific about IT because I'm on limited knowledge here. You know, I trust Glenn Settavi to handle and address those things and he, he always does.
The money to be used for this project will come from where?
I would, this money would be taken out of the mental health fund.
How much is it going to cost?
That's what I'm asking for your permission to do, to find out.
Who originally approved the architect to get involved?
We had talked about it. I had talked to each one of the supervisors about it.
Never got approved in here?
I asked, I spoke to.
It never got approved in here?
I, I spoke to each supervisor and said where we were. We've been discussing this for.
Those items should come before the board for $1,175.
As I was, as I was directed. I spoke to each of you individually and received permission from each of you individually to proceed.
I don't know how we can move on this until we know what it costs. And we've already spent.
I'm not asking.
How much money downstairs?
I am not asking for permission to proceed with the move. I'm asking for permission to find out how much it would cost to renovate that facility down there to accept us into it.
About a year ago, we put $70,000 in to move into general relief downstairs, years, two ago, I don't remember. Plus all the money we put in to remodel down there. It seems to me, and I certainly don't understand where we are with mental health in a state level. Making a move like this, I think, is premature and expensive. Those funds should be used on the mentally disabled and the mentally ill.
We need to be able to operate to do that and that's what these concerns are about, is for everybody to be under one roof and to serve our clientele in the most effective manner we can. We have simply outgrown that space down there numerous times. That's why remodeling has occurred. We knew at the last remodel that we were only going to be able to accommodate two more people in. At that time, the county decided to assume the tri-state operations. So we had four individuals that we were trying to move in and we cannot accommodate the one, let alone right now of the two positions that are left there. As well as the Social Services Case Management Program. That program is required by federal law because it is a Title 19 funded program. We cannot put anybody on a waiting list for more than 90 days. If we do not have a case manager to serve those individuals, then we're stuck with that kind of decision going forward also. So this is, you know, do I like the thought of moving out of the courthouse? No, I don't. But for the best operations of this office, that's what I feel is necessary. I'm comfortable with where things are for as comfortable as what anybody can be at this point. I have to operate. The office has to operate. Am I comfortable with Social Services Case Management going forward? Yes, I am. And I've been involved directly down in Des Moines, asking those specific questions. And I'm comfortable, just as comfortable with that as I am with any other decision going forward.
Patty, from the inception of us purchasing that building down there, we've always had plans in putting Veterans Affairs, which you've already done. And also, we also had plans in remodeling the additional space, if you will, for mental health services. And I can recall that we talked about using that as the Crisis Intervention Center for the Mental E.L. And we never really fully went through with the, with the plans on that. We've had talks for years about utilization of that facility for mental health services. So this fits as far as I'm concerned. The program is, is grown in Woodbury County and services provided to the Mental E.L. We don't have the space downstairs to add additional caseworkers for that area. We could keep them downstairs if we moved our city assessor out of there, which he wants to, to move, I've heard, to another, a part of this, this facility, but you'd still have the staff split. So to me, this is consistent with what we need to do. We've, this is not an uncommon circumstance to have programs out of the courthouse. I know the judges have always wanted this to be a courthouse, period. So I, I think, and I know that you've had discussions with me and other supervisors about, about doing this. So it makes sense for us to find out what it's going to cost us to remodel that particular facility, facility and the configuration of it and to come back with the recommendation from the architect. So I would move that we do that.
Second?
Second of all.
Well, just for, till we get to the discussion. Is that a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
That building was purchased with mental health funds?
Yes, it was.
For mental health?
Yes.
What happens if we don't put mental health out there?
I think we're stuck with the building and the county, anyway, and we're going to have to sell that particular facility.
But if you use mental health funds to purchase something, do you not have to use it for mental health?
Yes, you do.
That's my question.
Yes.
If we do not, what happens?
If you do not and you would relocate somebody else out there, they would either have to purchase the building and pay back mental health funds or they would become a renter of the mental health office and pay rent back to this mental health fund.
So Veterans Affairs, who has a great facility out there, would have to start paying the mental health funds.
Yes. And, and Veterans Affairs, I, I know all of you are aware of, of what has been transpired in the military. And with the number of suicides and the mental health issues, Veterans Affairs works sometimes in concert with our office and we refer to Veterans Affairs for those services because it's no longer such a stigma for a military family, for a military person to receive mental health services. So, you know, it's appropriate that they're there also.
Okay, thank you.
I have to go back to the original approval of the architect. I don't think that those things should ever happen outside of this group.
Well, we just have to proceed forward.
Yeah, I don't know if we approved it.
And Mark, you were made aware of it. Dave?
There's been an expenditure of $1,175 that was not on the agenda. Sorry.
I don't know how you do business without finding out whether the building would work first.
You should have had that discussion here first.
You have that discussion here now and like I say, Mark.
A little late.
Informed all along.
We did have that discussion about whether or not it would even accommodate the office and I was told to proceed with that.
At this board, there was not a formal vote taken.
Oh, no, 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 no. That was a never discussion in this room.
Well, I recall discussions in this room about it and, and we had discussions on this room about it during budget time.
Okay. Is there anyone else wish to be heard? James?
James in Bruggan Taxpayers Research Council, 516 Nebraska Street. My first question is, do we know all the details about the regional mental health plan that the state recently made changes to?
We know as much as we can know up to this point.
Are we, are they consolidating counties into one central location? Is every county still doing their own thing? What kind of detail do we know exactly?
We're operating as a region as of 2014, but that does not affect case management here.
Okay, okay. My next question is, Mr. Boykin mentioned that the city assessor is considered leaving, I believe, the fifth floor of the courthouse. Am I correct? Is that the one that's empty?
Right.
And the kitchen's currently empty and then if Social Services moves out, what are we doing with all this extra space?
We're certainly not looking to fill it up, but.
But, yeah.
City assessor's planning on maybe going to the fifth floor, correct?
Well, they, they talked about it and, and I think there's been some informal discussion about that, James, but there's really never been any formal discussion with the conference board about the, the moving of the city assessor, you know, out of the current area that they're in. But there's been informal discussion in, you know, with us individually about that. I'm not sure the city assessor would fit on the fifth floor. And of course, yeah, we do have the extra space, not only there in the, in the cafe area. I'm not sure that we want to still abandon that and, because we still need to plan what we need to do with that specific area. The city assessor may stay where they're at, but there's, but there's been some mention of, of the city assessor may wanting to move, but that's no assurance for that, for that to happen. We've also had other ideas individually about what should go on that fifth floor, but there's been no formal action taken on that or consensus, if you will, that that fifth floor should be used for other things. Talked about when that, when we moved the county engineer out of that area, people talked about having that as an exercise area for the employees of the county. We have not, we have not moved forward with that either because there's other things that we need to consider in using that, using that area of theirs. Yeah, we have some space here and I think that we need to use it for our highest and best use. To me, this recommendation, because we own it and we, our original plan was to use that Tri-View area as, for, for mental health purposes. It still can be used for that. We have the dollars for it. We need, still need a Crisis Intervention Center for the mentally, mentally ill and disabled in this community. And to have all of the program together, it just, just kind of makes sense. This is nothing that's been uncommon for the courthouse. As you remember, we had the licensing auto facility in this courthouse in the basement. We moved them out of here and put them in the, in the Tros Mahoi. We used to have the use of the climbing hills facility out there for our sheriff's department. I think it's good and we've moved our county engineer into the, into the Mobile area. So it's, it's something that, that, that we've, we've done in the past for the benefit of the public. And I think this is good for the public and the services that we're going to provide.
What is the objection of allowing the, all of her staff to be underneath one roof in the courthouse?
We don't have the space.
We still don't have the space for them because the, the program's going. Even though your, your original question is about the insurity of the, of the reorganization of, of mental health, we have not gotten any specific answers from the state on how that reorganization is going to, is going to take place.
So if we're not getting any answers yet, like you're saying, isn't it a little premature to do this? If this is a good idea, it might be, I'm not 100% sure, but would it be smart to wait to make sure before we spend the dollars?
For, for me, it's not because we still have the clients in this community that we have to serve.
Yes.
And, and we still have growth. To me, my priority is the client. And if we can provide convenience for the client and, and, and a quality program, that's our first priority. If we waited forever for the, for the state to, to plan for, for Woodbury County, I think we'd be in, in a little bit of trouble. But I, I think that we must continue to move on and, and continue to plan a good quality program for, for the people of this, for the patients and the people of this county.
And I guess my last question or kind of comment, I've been attending these meetings for about five years and I've maybe missed two or three in that full-time period, but I don't remember ever formal approval of any type of drawings ever done at the, at the board of supervisors here. So I'm, I'm a little curious about how, how much, well, first I'd like to know how much it costs to do the initial setup that you guys have in the drawings of.
Well, we've had some, we've had some in-house and formal drawings of that specific area out there that I can recall. And.
There was never approval by this board to hire the architect.
And they were, they were presented by Patty, but we never really approved those, those drawings because we never approved any dollars to be spent for that remodeling out there.
Okay. I have a question for the auditor. Does the supervisors have to make a formal approval in order for those drawings to get done to spend the amount of money, whatever amount it was, since I'm not sure what it was? Josh?
Expenditure should come before the board for approval.
Okay. Do we know how much money we spent for these current drawings?
1,100, Mark?
1,175.
Did that just get signed by the claims or before your meeting or how does that exactly?
Went through claims.
Went through the claims, but those, okay, because I, I have a hard, I, I don't remember any formal discussion about that item in front of the board of supervisors. So I'm a little concerned about that not being in a public discussion previously.
Well, the public discussion has been that her department is busting at the seams.
Yes, I remember that.
We've got people.
I was on a tour with you guys. I remember going through that.
We've got people downstairs. We've got people out on Tri-View. And in my opinion, everybody was on board with getting, you know, the preliminary out of the way. And that's to see if they would fit out there. And now comes the actual architectural study and to see.
So the next step you're doing now is the architectural study. What would you have considered the previous drawings to be? Was that just bubble concepts or what?
Just to see if they fit in there and how many people fit in there. The actual architectural work has not been done.
I'm still concerned that that money was.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
We probably ought to have a discussion about Veterans Affairs paying rent out there. Which means their budget would have to increase.
Well, I don't know if, but Veterans, I'm, I'm not in favor of that at all. Veterans Affairs, we've been talking for years to get them out of this courthouse and put them in a convenient location where our service people can come in and have the convenience of parking and space. And, and, and this has been a shared relationship as Patty has talked about. We, as you know, we have a lot of young men and women coming back from, from the service that have issues that needs to be taken care of by our, our program. So to me, it's a, it's a collaborative relationship where we should not, we should not have an exchange of money. I don't want to place a burden on Veterans Affairs at all. I really do not and because it's not.
I don't see us placing a burden on Veterans Affairs. They are not mental health oriented.
It would be.
And we would have to increase their budget to pay rent so it could go back into the mental health fund.
Well, Veterans Affairs pays utilities out there now.
That's not rent.
It's not rent, but I don't, I'm not in favor of that at all, Mark. That would be placing a burden on our, on our Veterans Affairs Department and that's not, that's inappropriate. We could have done the same thing in the courthouse here and providing space for them. We didn't do that.
Is there anyone else wish to be heard? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three to one. Thanks, Patty. Sheriff?
All right. Well, listen, bring up some discussion topics of our concern with the inmate population and staffing concerns. We've been talking since. We've been talking since you all sent us some letters with our concerns and talking about 12-hour shifts possibly. I have some concerns about those long hours too. We're just trying to figure out a way to deal with, one, the inmate population and, two, the coverage. We were doing a little research from 1999 until present. We had been deauthorized five positions. And so I know three of those were when I was a chief deputy under Sheriff Amick. And that was back in, I think, July of '03 or June of '03. So I was aware of those and I think possibly under Sheriff Parrott's administration was the other two. So that drops us down five. And I think that is a very big concern for us with how, we talked before about the number of staff that are on the floor versus the number of staff that have to be basically in a box, in a controlled area and not able to assist. So it presents some shortages. But I'll let Major Wick discuss. He has done a great deal of research and he's on top of it and I'm confident in his ability to tell you everything.
I don't remember.
I don't remember those either.
I've got them.
I sent those numbers, that's just a breakdown.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I came in an email to you just to show me from 1999 to present that we've lost five positions in the jail. And then these are just copies of the average monthly inmate population. The letter that I sent you on the 19th, I discussed the actual deauthorized positions to start with. And that we'd like to discuss getting those positions back and build there.
Just for clarification, the numbers that you are using, are these the total number of prisoners?
Yes, total. To include, to, in comparison, you remember asking, is it in comparison to our bed space? To include Prairie Hill, monitoring and main jail?
Yeah.
Does it include, does it include the federal prisoners?
Yes.
So actually, in the jail itself?
The main jail for the past couple of weeks, we've been running slightly over 200. It's depending on time of day and the day, it varied from 250 to 205. We've had a large increase in the past. It started climbing in the first part of June, got up into the high 180s, lower 190s and it's progressively climbed since then until, I think, we get, last Thursday, we were scrambling to try to find beds, set people up in temporary hold and should have done longer.
But what I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if we're matching the same numbers.
Yes, these are all the same numbers. Yes, from 1999 to present, we're taking the same picture that we're in.
Well, I think this is good information, but I need a little better breakout of who are we talking about here and where these people are at as far as Prairie Hills, the LEC, average number for the federal prisoners? How many we were housing there per day, per month and whatever? I know that we have somewhat, some control over those guys. What we do with that.
That would be our, at the point, George, at the point where we're at right now, that would be our next step is telling the marshals to come in and take their federal prisoners.
I don't want to, I know that that has financial implications too because I don't want to lose, you know, that income, but I sure don't want to jeopardize the safety of the jail by keeping those folks and have to increase our budget for that either.
We definitely, I want to make that clear here, we do not want to have to do that.
And I'm looking at these numbers and I have to figure them out. I don't, CO, 57 COs, that's county... Correctional officers.
The paper you're looking at there are, that's the staffing changes from 1999 to present.
Okay.
The other sheet that I gave you is laying pretty there is the inmate population.
Okay. And...
Since the jail opened.
Well, I'd be willing to look at this, but I have to have some additional information, Mr. Clausen, for me to move forward with it.
And that's what we're here for. This is just a discussion, we don't expect any action on this. We just want to put it out here for you and then, along with the staffing issue that we've got and the loss of staff over the last 14 years, we also have requested that we discuss the possibility of going to a different schedule with the correctional officers to try to put more people on the floor at one time, which is obviously the 12-hour shifts, but that would take a commitment from the board financially.
Yeah, there's a lot of dollars involved in all of this. So where the money would come from?
Right, that's what we're, yep, that's why we're bringing it up, something that...
Right now, because of the numbers in the jail and some of the safety and security issues that we've got up there, we had no choice but to increase the minimum staffing from six to eight just to keep it safe up there for everybody and cut down on possible litigations. And right now, we're tapping into our overtime just to keep it on with the numbers that we're working with. So it's not something we can sustain for a very long period of time. We're also burning our officers out. They're working two shifts a day sometimes.
Well, all of those things you're talking about, Todd, I like to, I like to look at, you know, as you say, the overtime, where it's being spent right now currently. And also, we can't forget about, we're putting in $1.2 million in that facility right now. We also are adding, you know, what is it, 67 new cameras?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six new cameras. And that should help some, so should help a lot as far as I'm concerned with that many cameras in a facility that size. So I guess I just need to have a bit more information here before I make a decision on it.
One other question. You said this started to occur in June?
Our numbers started climbing, yeah, this may, first part of June.
Is this a temporary thing or do we know?
Boy, let's put it this way, we have had this problem up there for a number of years.
Right.
As far as was generating this problem?
You know, I think, Larry, it runs in cycles and I think we were good for a while. Remember when we jumped that big number several years back?
1990.
Well, even in like, yeah, '97 and '03, it kind of was up there and then it kind of went down. And, you know, it's hard to say where we're going to be.
And I'm wondering too, you know, we've implemented some preventative programs in collaboration with you and also the judges. And I'm wondering if we, have we reduced those prevention programs, like the Compass Program, some other kind of program? Are we still going with those and also the detox program through Jackson Recovery?
Right.
Because I know when we, when we started with this thing, as you guys, you've been on there as long as I have, when we had that jail study and they wanted to, recommended that we build a 600-some-odd jail facility. And then we started implementing some of these other alternative programs to keep our folks out of there. And we had a waiting list of over 200-some-odd people that needed to get in there that we didn't have room for. And that helped us bring that population down. So I'm wondering, I mean, has the environment gotten worse or have we cut some programs that maybe we shouldn't have cut?
Right, I know that, as far as I know, we haven't. And I know that we meet with the judges regularly to make sure, see if we can get some out to keep in. And, you know, this is where they're feeling these people belong. But harking back to the trip we took to Sioux Falls, you know, maybe...
See, that's a program that I'm really, really interested in and that we should get going because I think that that would have a tremendous impact on our jail population.
Yeah, and we're with you on that. We want to, we have to get through a couple legal stumbling blocks with the courts.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, question about if they can be taken into custody. But I think if we can get that moving, I think the courts are excited about it also.
Yeah.
Of course, we have to work with the program, so they've got to be on board with it.
Absolutely. To me, I'd rather spend the money on that program.
Well, it's funny that we, I mean, it's self-funded.
Absolutely, because, I mean, what we're talking about here, five new people, we're talking about ongoing costs of over $250,000 to $60,000. And that program, I don't know if it's an income maker, but I do believe, based on what we saw in Sioux Falls, we could reduce our jail population with just the presence of that particular program.
Well, and what they did, if you remember, was the sheriff spoke on the fact that, the fact that these people are paying for it, actually paid for the salaries of those that were part-time and the deputy that was overseeing it, so...
Yeah, just based on volume.
Just of those people.
Because they had a tremendous volume of people going through there. And I think we could probably be doing the same thing right here. So I'd like to see to get going on that part of it. To me, that's kind of a neat, neat program for us.
Yeah, the other part is parking.
Yeah, parking, you know, we've kind of been doing a little survey here in the morning. They run at six to nine up in Sioux Falls and then six at nine at night. Those hours are pretty good parking. We have met with Lisa McNeil and she said the side entrance to...
On the street side of the LEC.
Where the parking is over there is available because the state has gone to everything electronic and there's a room that would be available that could come in and out. And there's probably 15 or 16 parking spots. I might be off a few, but from...
There's a room right there where the clerk is?
Yeah, when you come in on that Douglas Street side, they could come in that door and hang a right and they'd be in and out like they were in about a minute or less. And...
In Trosper Hoy?
No, this is the LEC.
LEC.
Oh, LEC.
It would be you, the room would be actually on the north end of the clerk's office. They do not need that area anymore because of the light ramp.
If we get the city to lighten up between six and eight on the parking meters, I don't know when they start that.
I think they start at roughly eight. But, I mean, you could plug a meter for a dime and you're less than 10 minutes. We saw that.
What about, what about the old Eagles Club? I mean, is there any space in that where we could remodel?
Well, I think there will be, George, I think there will be with this, what's in their Homeland Security now. It seems like that's going to be needed, so...
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not going to suggest this board, there's a parking spot available. That empty green space, I don't know, that'd be a good piece. But those are the numbers and I think what we'll do is continue to update you so you know every month kind of the numbers that we're running and some of the... I do have concerns about, for now, the amount of lack of staff versus the number of inmates. And I'd like, maybe down the road, that maybe we have some more discussion on the hiring of it. Because we would have to hire, if we had 24/7 or not, we'd have to hire at least one or two to run that program and that money would fund it. But maybe looking at these numbers, see where we're down. I appreciate you taking some hard look at that because I think it has a, it has a great concern for, I think, all of us together, is the shortage of staff versus the inmate population. And I'm not sure that it's going to go down. You know, I think we're going to be a steady 200 inside there. I don't...
Hope you're wrong.
I, George, I hope I am too.
And see, that's what throws me is if it's a steady 200 in the LEC, that's one thing. But if it's a steady 200 of people being arrested, then we've got places, work release...
We are working on that to look at those inmates and see if they meet the criteria of being moved to Prairie Hill. That's part of our problem, some, a lot of these guys are too violent. They can't go out to Prairie Hill.
Yeah, the sheet, we didn't get one this week, but the breakdown sheet, you know, it shows how many are in the actual jail and that's a great help.
Right, and that's what the courts, Larry, is concerned is that, you know, they're concerned about the safety of the community like we all are and they don't want to release someone to an area that...
No, we don't either.
Exactly, I know we're all on the same page here. So we just have to figure out what we're going to do and...
Most of your guests come from the Sioux City Police Department, I'm assuming.
Sioux City, right, exactly, yes. But we're the ones that...
The thing you need to remember is that in the makeup of the jail, we were running with six officers. Two of those officers are locked and controlled in the fed's four on the floors for 160, 170, 180, 190, it takes, bumped it to eight just for the integrity of the whole jail itself. And now we're running with 200 so you can get, 200 leaves six on the floor for that.
You know, and I think we're looking constantly at ways to try to help save money, you know. I know I've gone to different jails and seen that the booking people are, you know, they're not the actual correctional officers they book. But then you have issues with them, okay, they're just booking or can something happen? So they're not giving us enough help. So I think, you know, part-time staff, it's just not probable in this area. These are people that need to be trained and go through the jail certification. And so staffing is a concern. I think we're going to help ourselves here with the cameras, but I think we also need to look at a number of staffing. It's something that maybe we can bring up.
What about your volunteers that we just approved a couple of weeks ago? I mean, would that, would they fit in any areas like this?
No.
They wouldn't?
They have to be supervised by sworn.
I mean, you know, you were talking about though, I'm talking about the program that we looked at in Sioux Falls. Would they fit there, I mean, to a certain extent?
Oh, up there in Sioux Falls, what they, what they used was retired peace officers.
I know that, yeah.
And... No, they wouldn't, right, they would just be the 24/7.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Because I know there's some initial cost for startup, but that's a, that's a self-sustaining program, which I really do like and it also, like I said, it has other spinoffs.
Oh, yeah. Well, it'd be, you know, you don't look at it as a revenue generator, but it is. It really is because those that are in trouble are going to be paying $4 a day to be out. And it's, when it adds up, what happens is what I've met with the judges is the concern is, under the state law today, those that are on safer drunk driving, second offense. In Iowa, we still have this electronic ignition and that's $1,000 just to do that. It's an old system and I don't think...
Is that the system that you install in your car?
Right.
And you breathe into it?
Right, and where up in South Dakota, they said they found out that it's not effective anymore unless there's a camera in there watching it because they figured out ways around it. And the bracelet program of that 24/7 tells it every day they got to come in.
Absolutely.
But these are our numbers we wanted to share with you and these are our concerns. Those are the levels that we had, five down and where we're at today. Something for a discussion down the road, but I just want you to know, I don't, we will continually keep you, I'd say probably every two weeks with the numbers so you know where we're at. And we should probably, if they continue to move in a direction, I understand where, money is, money is a factor for everything, but I think it's a big concern for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. EJ?
He did have a hearing next 10:30. He thought that he would be done in time. I can see him there, want to...
Do that, go right up there and... Do that, go right up there and-
The purpose for this item on the agenda was basically to discuss the portion of the agenda, the nine o'clock, ten o'clock part and the approval of claims. The memo that was in the board materials kind of explains the issues surrounding that. It would be our recommendation, just from a best practices standpoint, that the board would look at considering starting the meeting in a way that would allow for approval of claims, and then maybe a brief recess right before the ten o'clock, and then go right into the meeting. So I don't know if there's any questions or any discussion.
Josh, I, I guess I don't agree with that. We're in here to sign and to review vouchers and, and claims of that type. It's really not a meeting as far as I'm concerned. And we've traditionally done it that way. To formally call a meeting to order to sign claims seems highly unusual to me.
Well, I do agree with you that the board, ultimately, the board members do have to look at each claim and determine, you know, whether there's sufficient documentation, whether it should be approved or not. However, when it comes to actually accepting or denying a claim, the code is very clear that that has to be done in open session by a recorded vote. So my recommendation regards to that would be that you continue to use the cover sheets like they have, continue to, to go through the packets and review those. And then, in open session, a single motion could approve or deny all the claims as noted on the cover sheets.
Does that come after each individual board member signs the claims, or does that come prior to the vouchers being signed?
I think it could come after the signatures. The motion would just be to the effect that the, the proves, the claims would be settled as noted on the claim cover sheets. And then, if there was any single claim that a board member wanted to have voted on individually, that would be that the board members would have the ability to ask the board to vote on a specific claim.
Now, since I've been there, there has not been a motion to approve the claims.
No.
And I'm aware of that. The rationale for, for my recommendation that it would be a motion is that there's a code section that says that the, the board can only exercise, can only take action through either a motion, a resolution, or an ordinance. And so, I mean, the, the signatures denote where each board member stands on a particular claim, but it, it doesn't fit neatly with the code section that says it needs to be a motion, a resolution, or an ordinance, so.
All right, so it's been done wrong all these years?
Well, I will say that just, when there's, when there's a code section that, that's specific as to how it should be done, I would rather go with that than, than saying, well, this is how we've always done it. And it could be that when it was started, when it was done a particular way, that that's, I don't know if the law has changed, I haven't looked at that or not, but it, it's my, what the code says right now and, and my understanding of it, that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Butler?
If you're approving all the claims by motion submitted, or what the city council does, why would you have to sign a claim form or, you know, approval thing on each fund? You're approving them as a total. If you want something pulled out, you saw the claim in the front, you pull it out. But to me, it's a waste of time to sign all the individual claim for by fund if you're going to approve month sum at the end of the year. You approved the claim, you paid your estimate, so why would you waste your time signing about, you know, in front of a plane by fund?
Now, this, this whole thing is very archaic. It used to be that the board of supervisors, when they signed a voucher, they knew what it was. They'd get maybe ten vouchers, let's say. Now we get several thousand a week. And for us to know what we're signing off on is virtually impossible. You do catch, you know, one every now and then that's polled. But for the most part, you have to rely on the elected officials or the department heads to verify that these are actual expenditures. And I don't know how we change this or why we change it. I just have a good explanation for it.
I do. I'm very confused because as a representative on this board to the Sioux Land District Health, we all sign off on those claims. And, and it's normally during the meeting when we sign, sign, sign the individual claims. I don't know how it operates for the, for the conservation board when that board signs off on claims. And then those claims are again sent to this board for their, for, for our approval. It seems a bit redundant if we're going to, if we're going to sign and then pass a motion to approve everything. If we're going to approve everything to start with, then why sign the claim?
And my response to that would be the, the signature and the, the cover sheet that we use with the claims, that particular procedure isn't mandated by the code. It's what we've done internally as far as that's how they're processed through the auditor's office, and that's, I mean, that's the form that we use internally. The code wouldn't require the signature and the motion. However, the code does leave it up to the board to ultimately be the ones to determine the sufficiency of the claim. And the signatures indicate that, you know, that it has been reviewed. I believe that usually the receipts are in that packet or whatever documentation there is for the claim. So that's one way of, of showing that they've been reviewed by the board and that-
We're the only governmental body that does it, I believe in, aren't we? I don't think this, I don't think the Board of Education-
Come on in, PJ, we're-
Don't be hiding.
And I don't think that the, does the city council sign off on all claims?
I'm not sure what procedure they use. I, I, I do know, as Dennis said, that they either approve or deny them with a single motion during their meeting, I believe, sir.
Well, I kind of agree with Mr. Butler. It's redundancy. Why are we signing if we can just make a motion? Because we get, we get these, we get the, I can't even say-
The vouchers in our email.
We get the vouchers on Friday to look at anyway, in our packets. So we're already verifying. I mean, if, if you're doing your homework, you're already verifying it. So Tuesday, when we come in, why can't we start the meeting at, say, at ten o'clock, he, he opens up the meeting, we just approve the claims. Why do we have to start it any earlier in ten, or why do we just not put it in the agenda and not sign it?
There's no reason that you can't move that.
Then, then we don't have to sit out here and sign each, each one, because I look at my packet every week. I, I look through them. So, and if I have a problem with them, I'm going to pull them, I'll have them pull it. But I won't. Most of the time, they're, by the time you guys get them to us, they're good. And if they're not, you'll show us which ones are.
But you're, that started years ago. The board asked us to do the pre-audit of those claims. But I was informed early on that that is not something that, that's not a duty that you can delegate. You have to approve those claims. And it's the ultimate responsibility of this board to determine if sufficient documentation exists in order to approve that.
And there, there is a AG's opinion that's exactly on that point, that basically says what you just said.
Well, through the budget process, we approve budgets. Department heads and elected people work from line items to submit those vouchers. We have to have some faith in our department heads and elected officials to be following the budgetary process in terms of drawing that money down. I go through those things. What the hell will I know about some of that stuff? There's no way you can know all about every one of the things that's in a voucher.
The one thing that you're really looking for is that you believe there's sufficient documentation to approve the claim.
So where are we at?
I think they're looking for a motion on what we should do.
Well, that's-
In my-
We do away with the claims, the department, and just approve the total for the week?
No. No, you can't do that. But I think we could make a motion that we accept the claims as follows at the start of each meeting. And we don't have to sign them.
The claims are still going to be available for you to scan through if you want to. You know, you can come in individually, look at the claims on Monday or Tuesday morning or whatever, look at them. If you want something pulled out, you pull them out, have approved or disapproved individually, if you have, if you want disapproved. But you don't need to sit there and sign every fund, because you're going to be doing this, you're repeating what you're doing. You're signing, then you're repeating by approving the motion, approving all the total, ten million dollars, whatever.
Once we sign this, the public can come in and ask for them, correct?
They still can, with EK.
They can, anyway.
But they have to be approved first, correct? After the approval, anybody can come in and ask you, I want to look at that one. So why do we need to sign them?
I really don't see anything wrong with our current process. I mean, it's taken me a lot of years to get used to it because I've never, never done that in the past. When I was on the Board of Education, we never ever had that kind of a process, the new bills. We just approved what was brought to us by our finance director and trusted that those bills were, were approved by various department heads and the superintendent. This has been different. It's more hands-on, and I don't mind that. It is good. We have caught some stuff that, minor things that, that's gone, that's come, come before us. Just this other portion that I'm talking about, to make it a formal meeting, when we're in here doing work to, to, to review and sign these things, it's beyond me why we have to do it.
No, but Pat wouldn't have to come in here at nine o'clock and sit for an hour while we're, each one of us individually comes in and-
Not requiring him to do that. To me, it's not, it should not be a formal meeting.
That's a separate question, I think.
Yeah, that is a separate question.
All right, so that I get this straight, and we do the proper thing. If we start the meeting at ten o'clock, forget from nine to ten, and just put on there to approve the claims in a motion, will that do it?
You could, you could craft the agenda item in such a way that would give the public notice that you would intend to either approve or deny the claims in a single motion. And then, as part of that, any board member could pull a single claim out and ask for a, a separate vote on a particular item.
So then-
Still hope that the auditor will do that.
Yes. Essentially what you're doing when you're signing those is, that's the tradition. Hasn't been something that I've agreed with all these years. That the, that's what you should be doing. It's just a motion that you, during the open meeting, that you approve the claims. You are authorized to be audited for the claims. And during that period of time, gives you the opportunity, if you've seen a claim somewhere along the line, that doesn't, you know, that you'll question, you can pull it ahead, pull it right at that time during the meeting and look at that in the circle of the nine. You want that one pulled, through the process.
Well, our office also reviews those claims, and it's been doing a very good job of it. And I think that process has to continue and should continue. I don't, I don't understand the concern, is basically what I don't understand.
Well, the concern is the, is the informational discussion that takes place. It was a prime example of what occurred this morning here, is that folks would come in and talk about those who think that they have the approval. And then what occurred at that meeting just a few minutes ago occurs.
Well, I mean, we have, we have, we have done that for, for many, many years. And there's been other department heads that have come in and made informal or, or informational presentations to this board and gain a consensus on which direction they should head. And basically, I think that's what happened this morning, that, which is different than what we're, what we're talking about. We're talking about coming in here between nine and ten and, and signing off on claims, and should that be a formal meeting at the time to get that done?
All right, back to my question. You can open the meeting. First item on the agenda would be to approve the claims. That would take care of everything that we do now from nine to ten. Is that correct?
I believe you can approve the claims-
I don't, well, I don't care what you believe.
Let me finish, let me finish here. What, I think that part of what they're doing, part of what's being done now is the board is fulfilling its function or its duty to determine the sufficiency of the claim by reviewing the packets and the signature during that nine to ten o'clock part. The actual approval of the claims can all be done in a single motion. However, the board is comfortable with fulfilling their duty to determine the sufficiency of the claims. That can be done outside of the meeting. I mean, you, you get a list of them with your packet of what they are. If you have any questions about them, I mean, they're available from, from Pat. So however, you're comfortable with fulfilling that duty of, of determining the sufficiency, that can be done outside of the meeting. But as far as approval, a single motion will satisfy.
All right, so that the claim, the department claims, if the auditor brings them in here at nine o'clock, and a board member has come up with a question from what he is deemed in his packet, that he wants to question a claim, then the claim would be here for them to look at the paperwork. So they could, they would be doing that on their own. And then at ten o'clock, they would make the motion to approve the claims with the exception of a certain claim, whatever it might be. So then you would pull that from the claims at that time.
Right, and vote separately on whatever, whatever claim it was that-
Right. So, now are you in concurrence with this?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll have the claims brought in at nine o'clock. If you want to go through them at that time, feel free to come in and go through them. Meeting will start at ten. And that will get you from sitting there for an hour. How that happened to you, I have no idea, but-
And it eliminates informational discussion.
That I, that I would hate to see happen.
You can't do that without it being a public meeting.
Well, and that was, that was part of the concern, and I, I think we've addressed it in the memo, is that if, and, and I, I haven't been down here in the, in the port, nine to ten portion of the meeting, so I'm not sure everything that transpires. But there, that is, that is a, a possibility that if there's, it is a meeting, and if there's something that's going to be talked about, then it should be on the agenda if it's, if it's part of the meeting. If we're, if we're going to start the meeting at ten, and then the nine to ten portion, you know, the normal rules about not deliberating on the matter, on the matter would apply. So.
You know, I believe, just if I could add or echo some of those comments, a large part of this particular issue as far as informational discussion centered around the other verbage that was added to that, which was informational discussion of agenda items. And I believe everybody agrees, and I think that piece has been taken off of the agenda- And I believe everybody agrees, and I think that piece has been taken off of the agenda.
Right.
So it talks about informational discussion. There's no problem with the board discussing. And the example I give is that one of board members was, say, for instance, in Cherokee. And they had met with some folks and something was going on in Cherokee that Woodbury County may want to look into. That board member may come in and say, hey, we were discussing this and I think this is something Woodbury County should take a look at. But then the boundary becomes, that's all you should really talk about. You shouldn't go into, or we should do it this way, or how do you figure we should go about doing it? That should be then added to an agenda and then later discussed earlier if the board chooses to do that. So we're not trying to prohibit the board from talking. It's just that when you cross that line from talking and getting into deliberation, and of course, we can't tell you where that line is, and that's where the tough part comes in. And so really, this piece is just a caution. Again, George, we're not trying to take away the discussion piece.
I think you, I think it is taking away from the discussion and I, and it, it's, there's so much subjectivity in this that it makes it sort of really, really difficult to talk about anything.
And again, that's not our purpose. Our purpose is not to try to say you can't talk. Because again, if we look at your agenda as it is, you have that last line item where it says, any item that's not in the agenda can be discussed. But again, it goes back to discussion. And we just want to throw it out there. In the past, there may have been certain points where it might have crossed that line. And so we just put that in there to say, hey, just watch it, you know, when you're discussing an item, just make sure you don't cross that line of where to deliberate, where we're coming from.
Well, it was just like this morning when I brought up with the sheriff's discussions about an additional five people and we went to Sioux Falls to visit the, the program there and I, it was not on the agenda for us to discuss that particular program twenty-four seven, but I talked about that. It was not on the agenda for discussion. We talked about that. Also talked about the one point four, two million dollars that's going to be expended for the remodeling of the jail. That was not on the agenda for discussion. Like I said, there's a lot of subjectivity here that I'm concerned about that, or latitude that, that may be restrictive when it comes to discussion of various items.
But George, I think that's good. What you talked about with the twenty-four seven, with the expansion, that's where it needs to be, is out here. It needs to be talked out.
I, I agree with that.
But that's, that's what they're saying. They're okay with that as long as it's out here.
Yeah, and we didn't, we didn't make a, we didn't make a...
It's when people say things behind either here or they shit out here, we talk about it.
On any of that stuff.
Right, right, but that, that's, that's okay because it was a discussion.
And it was not on the agenda.
Right.
Those things don't have to be on the agenda. The point here is it shouldn't be done in the back room.
Well, it's not done in the back room.
It should be done in this room.
It was not done in the back room.
It's open session. That's where it's supposed to be.
Absolutely, I agree with that. We have no disagreement there. The only disagreement is, is that we don't do things in the back room.
I would make a motion that we change the process to approving the bills at the beginning of the agenda with them being available prior to the meeting.
I'd second that.
You say prior to the meeting, nine o'clock. You want them in here?
Monday or Tuesday. Monday's fine. Actually, we get them on Friday.
You get them on Friday? Yeah, we get them on Friday.
And that's not going to change. It's my understanding.
They're not put together, then I get that.
You get the, what information do you get here?
We get...
We get the claims.
No, you don't get the detail.
Well, we don't get, you get the claim.
We get the claim, but we don't get the detail.
What, what detail?
There's detail attached to a lot of it.
Okay, but we should know what's, well, the auditor's doing their, their job. Oh, you're not?
Alright, so nine o'clock Tuesday morning, that work for you? Your motion?
Monday or nine o'clock Tuesday morning, both should be available because they're available Monday morning, right?
They're available anytime. They're available anytime on Friday.
You want a time set is what you're looking for?
That's what I'm looking for.
Give them a time.
Tuesday, nine o'clock would be great. Everybody should be here or come in if you want to be here, and they can be available. Make sense to me, okay?
It's still second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, three to one.
Thank you.
Mr. Butler?
Larry, actually, the claims are, get it directed to three on by the auditor's office, and they're brought in there and also audited.
By our office.
For documentation, and they are flagged that there is something that should be brought attention to, or has insufficient documentation, or something that's illiterate.
Right.
They'll find anybody with documentation, but then...
Right.
So, it is by all board members to look at. And we may have no make do, whatever, he does, whatever. So, but they are available, like Pat says, from Friday till Tuesday, any board member walking to look at it.
Well, basically, we had not made a change.
No, they might change, they're making it as approval.
Yes, we're taking nine AM off of this agenda.
And not have to sign every, you know, sign the twenty different packets. And you're approving a lump sum total to be approved and be paid by the auditor.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Nara?
Sorry, officer, I'm going through the claims. I was sorting here while I was listening to the discussion. I missed one from the bids and orders. It was Ash the Jeep. If I could go back to seven after reading the record.
What? You're talking about a bid?
Yes, they had one more.
In their packet, so you received it timely?
Yes, it was received at the time that they were open. It was just stuck to that Jeep.
Alright, so it was just your error?
It was my error, yes.
Okay, go ahead and read it.
Uh, the final bid was for a twenty-fourteen meet a P sign a half finder. Purchase price, twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. Less trade, four thousand. Net purchase price, twenty-two thousand nine hundred. If we could amend the current...
I think you made the motion.
...list of bids.
I would amend my motion.
To include that. The bid to be sent back to the county engineer.
George, I think you said it.
And I apologize for the extra. I'm already busy.
Not a problem.
Maybe I did. I can't really say exactly. Do we need a formal motion to, you can just automatically do that?
Alright, let's do that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wish to be heard at the board, in the audience? We're adjourned.
Trade signatures on this.
Thank you. I have eleven thirty, I'm late.
Larry, you'll have to sign off on that, too.
I have to be someplace at eleven thirty.
You can't sign that? That was a meeting.
I don't think I do either. Okay. Okay, alright.